Called meeting to order at four thirty-two. We're doing hybrid attendance and also remote attendance pursuant to the state executive orders in the agenda. And so we'll go ahead and start with the agenda. The only change you wanted to make was to change the electronic sign to an action item?
Change it.
If you can, okay, never mind. All right. So the approval of the agenda, approval of May twenty, uh, twenty-one minutes. Um, and that's, that's it.
Do you agree with that, that you can't change it?
Yeah.
That's before you.
Okay. So I do need a motion.
I'll move to.
Okay, okay, and then you talk, Michael? You're on mute. Amy, or can somebody?
I second.
Thank you.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Michael.
You, okay.
Yeah. I saw you, but you gotta hear it.
I'm like that.
Yeah.
Now on, that's second.
All right, so I have to all go down the list. So Kate?
Yes.
Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, and Samantha, yes. All right, so the consent agenda. Um, we do not have any public comments as far as I know. Is that right?
It's correct.
Okay. Uh, written communications from the public. Um, I did have an email sent to my personal board, um, that she was just concerned about the masks. Um, and that was actually lifted the Friday before. Um, I think she sent it last Thursday. Um, and she was just kind of asking about children's programming. Um, and so I just talked to Rick. Um, we're still just reviewing it because of, um, children can't be vaccinated, so. Um, so we're just being cautious.
And I think essentially the decision, and Melissa and I talked about it, is that, you know, we're not going to change much for children's program from what the way, the way we have been. We will, uh, we're not really enforcing this kind of soft enforcement of masks for the public area, but if we're having a, a program, you know, in a room behind closed doors, we can, uh, we know that, that people under twelve can't be vaccinated, so we're, we're gonna social distance and look at capacity limits and require masks.
All right. Any questions about that? Okay. So city library report?
Uh, you know, May was kind of a blur. Uh, I had some family emergencies and then I had a surgery of my own. Uh, I, I, I can show you more easily and I'm gonna, uh, it's weird because the screen that I'm gonna show it on is the same screen looking at you guys on, but I'm gonna share, share the screen with you guys, uh, I think. Let's see.
Have to be smarter than this smartphone. I know, it's so strange.
Okay, so, um, did you guys, you guys all see that?
Yeah, I can.
All right. So I, I want to point out some, we talked, uh, that there were gonna be some gaudy numbers coming up. How about a sixty thousand percent increase in, uh, in, uh, young adult materials circulated, uh, from, uh, from May of twenty twenty? Well, that's because we were close to May of twenty twenty. So that's, uh, we knew we were gonna have some huge numbers, but from twenty nineteen, it's a seventeen percent, it's a seventeen percent decrease. So twenty nineteen is, it's a, it's a seventeen percent decrease. So, uh, physical books, oh, excuse me, DVDs, up sixteen thousand percent. Uh, doesn't tell us much, but if you look at compared to twenty nineteen, they're actually down forty-nine percent. Uh, I, I, I don't know that it's fair to compare twenty twenty-one to either of those years. Uh, they're, they're, this is not normal yet, so, and twenty twenty certainly was not. Uh, better way to visualize it, and thanks to Michelle for, uh, for doing these, these graphics here. Let's look at, uh, this is our, our circulation in twenty nineteen by, uh, young adults, excuse me, children, young adult, and?
So it's adult, young adult, children's?
And then total, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we went from twenty-four, six, to thirteen, nine, to nineteen, four. Well, uh, you know, I, I don't know what to make of that because it's not, none of those months are, are exactly what we would call normal. So, um, but let's look at the projection. This is, these are our actual year numbers, uh, for twenty nineteen. Our total circulation was just over three hundred sixteen thousand. Twenty twenty was two hundred and four thousand, and we're projecting for this year two hundred and thirty-four thousand, but I can't put any confidence in that projection because I don't have a good model, again, to base it on. This is not certainly like twenty twenty, uh, but it's not gonna be as robust as twenty nineteen either. Well, that, I'm gonna go back to this though, because here's the number that I, I think that was most interesting. So we're looking at an overall decrease from twenty nineteen circulation. This includes electronic, uh, about twenty-one percent. But let's look at the door count. Sixty-one percent decline. So what that says to me is that the people that are coming in the building are the hardcore users. Because the, I mean, we're talking about sixty-one percent decline in foot traffic, and yet our, our circ is only down twenty-one percent. So we're just, it seems like we've just got the, the super users back in the building and, uh, not much more than that. Let's see, as we start to do, uh, in-person programming again, I think that's gonna tell us a lot more. You know, if that's, if that takes off, we could see, you know, us begin to approach normal. So that's what I've got for you guys, but I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a lot more numbers in here, but it's hard to know really what to take from them.
And that's interesting, I mean, the, the foot tra, the traffic.
It's a, it's a huge, huge decline, and, you know, uh, obviously we did a lot better in twenty twenty because the door was locked, but, uh, we, it's, it's way, way down. And, um, I, that's, uh, new users, down forty-seven percent from twenty nineteen. I, it's, uh, I, it's a ninety-four percent decline from twenty twenty, but that's because we got every Eisenhower student in E card in May of twenty twenty.
You know, you know, Rick, uh, this is Greg. You know, given that Governor Pritzker, what, it's last Friday, on the eleventh, basically reopened the state, I believe. I think that was the date.
Yes.
So, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda thinking, you know, is that the date that in large part, things go back to normal, whatever that is? And I would think maybe from that date forward, kind of tracking things, um, what does attendance look like? What does foot traffic look like? Because it, it just seems to me that with that government, with the governor's announcement, you know, throughout the state, uh, they're kind of saying everything's open again. And, and then it'll become, you know, those individuals that believe everything's open will start, you know, going to places and doing all that stuff. You know, there're probably gonna be some ramp-ups from those that think there's, you know, you know, the pandemic is still around and they need to still protect and so on. But I would think, you know, over the next several months, we're gonna see, um, where the real numbers are, attendance-wise and circulation-wise and overall-wise.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a lot to that. The, the, the wild cards are kids, you know, because kids can be, and it's gonna kind of depend on, on family choice. You know, some families are gonna continue, and we're, we're already seeing that. Uh, some families are gonna, gonna continue to be very cautious and others aren't. And they, they represent a fairly large share of, of what we do, so, uh, that's the wild card. As far as adults go, I think you're absolutely right. Uh, you know, there are some folks who are, you know, immunocompromised or can't get the vaccination for whatever reason, but, uh, I, uh, it's, it's certainly an important date, Friday, last Friday, in the, in the, uh, in this process.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? All right, go over to division head reports. Um, Robert?
Yeah, he was, uh, actually, just got a text from him, hang on. He's, uh, I think he's traveling, I've seen him in the lake, he just apparently hasn't gotten to it yet.
Okay. Uh, so we can go to Becky?
Okay. So I really only have one thing to mention, um, because last one was a bit of a blur for me too, but, um, I do wanna mention that actually yesterday, we started working with Project Thinkwell, it's something we've been working on for a couple of months now, um, with Jesse Blunt and his crew. Um, he started his camp yesterday, or well, this week, um, and fifteen children have been coming in and out of local history every Wednesday, starting yesterday, um, and will be for the next four weeks, uh, to use our resources to learn about Decatur history.
Yeah, that's, that is great. And, yeah, I saw the mountain park yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, they, they kind of come in and out in groups, so they're not all coming in at one time. They're coming in like numbers of five, so.
That's so cool. Look at your haircut.
Thank you.
It's nice to see faces. Yeah. All right, well, we will move on to Melissa.
Yes, well, I hate to be a broken record, but May was a blur. Um, I, I know that for the most part in PRS, we were working to get ready for some reading program, that we weren't certain what it was gonna look like, but we're hoping that it was better than last year and be on track to regain some of what we lost. So we were very busy getting things together, trying to figure out what kind of programs we could offer. I mentioned some things, that we're having a coaching class, we're doing paw prints again, but now that the state's reopened, we're talking about story times and how can we do that and how we can do that with kids. Today, or actually, all this week, I have been dedicated upstairs from the children's desk, and so I've gotten to see firsthand. Today, we had unexpected, well, we knew one group of preschoolers were coming in, but we didn't expect another one to come in at the same time, and luckily, we had two volunteers on the summer reading desk and two of us to assist. So they came in, and it's wonderful, because not only are they bringing their entire class in and doing the summer reading program, but in each case, all of the children got to check out two books. So they're utilizing the library, they're taking, you know, they're getting their prizes, they're reading, and they are logging in, it's working really well. And Beanstack has been, we have geared ourselves to go along with Beanstack to make it simpler all along the way. So we actually have patrons who are using the paper log but not Beanstack. However, we're using Beanstack to track them and give them their rewards. We have patrons that aren't doing the log but are doing Beanstack.
I hear you both.
And we have people that are doing both. So across the board, we are providing what everybody wants, where they want it, how they want it. So I think anybody who is using it, they're getting used to using it, and it's much better this year than last year, and we have it, and we will continue to use it, so. All that work in May paid off for June.
Do we know, well, I, this is like more of a June update, but do we know how the fly-by-hand landing?
I don't know. I asked that question earlier, I haven't received an answer yet. Um, I do know that as far as reading, we've set a goal this year of fifteen thousand, and I think we're about to push four thousand minutes read so far this summer.
Is it twenty-six percent?
Yes.
Just a few minutes ago, so.
Yes, so that's cool. And I know we have almost seven hundred kids signed up for the children's portion.
That's awesome.
Yes.
I mean, considering.
Considering. Amazing, and it's only June. And there have been people who have logged into Beanstack and are already logging, who've been on vacation, who are just now checking in. Some people we didn't even know were participating, have already been participating in the bar, which they never could have done.
Hopefully, hopefully next year, we can go back to the big kickoff.
Yeah, which is what we're missing. That might be foot tracking, right?
That is nice, because back when my kids did it, like, we'd probably be on vacation or be out of town during the first week, because they always wanted to start the first week, and then they'd be really upset, because they were week-long, and they couldn't finish the first week, they couldn't finish. My kids were very into that.
Not only could they have been read, reading all that time, but we're now giving them all the rewards they've already earned.
That's good.
We were used to be very strict about each time you visit, you get one. And then you have to read for a week, and you get more. Now, if you've been reading for the last three weeks, here you go.
Which is, yeah, that's, I mean, I agree with them one week, but if you've already signed in and done the three weeks.
The way they're tracking it, they can log each day they've been reading, so why penalize somebody who's been reading the entire month?
My kids were always reading.
Exactly.
How many, how many, how many times do I have to, like, write stuff down? So, it's really cool. All right, thanks, Melissa. Um, I know Matt, I haven't seen Matt here.
Yeah, Matt's on vacation, Carol's on vacation, and Robert's, well, he was just there.
Was there. What'd you guys get to see again?
I saw all those emails, man, it's just like, ah!
All right, so I guess we'll, we can probably hear from Robert. And so we did not have a PPPR committee meeting, and we also did not have a, our finance and property meeting.
Hi, hi.
Thank you. And we did not have a foundation meeting, and Robert sent here to talk about the friends meeting. I was gonna go to that, and then I had a work meeting, so. Didn't work out. And that was the day we closed early, I think?
We closed, we did close early, not quite as early as we did the next several days. Uh, that was the day we closed at five-thirty.
So, uh, so we can get an update from Robert if he ends up joining, um, IHLS?
Uh, and you know what? I didn't get the executive council, uh, uh, report, but I can tell you that, uh, and I think I mentioned it last month, that they, they, they did the, IHLS voted, and this is every, uh, quorum of the four hundred and sixty-seven libraries in the consortium voted to purchase the Solus app, and it's, uh, the implementation should start July one, and it's only gonna cost us a couple hundred bucks a year, uh, at least the first, the first few years. And it is an app that does a ton of things. Uh, you're gonna be able to get that app and search across, you know, our catalog, plus all of our electronic holdings, and in one place, you'd be able to do, uh, reserves for holds or for curbside pickup on it. You will be, if we choose to, uh, you will be able to check out books using your phone. It will check it out to your account and turn the security off, and you can walk out the door without even going to the self-check kiosk, so. Uh, it's, it's got a lot of great, and it's got beacons, if we also, if we choose to turn it on, so a beacon will, uh, if you get, if you set it, so you get notifications on your app, say you're, uh, walking in the nine hundreds, it'll say, here's a new travel book that, uh, might be of interest to you. You get a pop-up notification about, uh, about where you are, so.
It's kind of crazy.
It's kind of cool.
It's a little creepy also, in some ways.
The magic tree floats off the shelf.
But it's, it's, uh, it's a really cool app, and, uh, implementation starts July one. I don't have a report on how long it's gonna take before it's, it's live. We'll get to, each library, we'll get to brand it, so each library in the consortium, we'll get to brand it to their library.
Your favorite thing.
Yeah, and it's a, yeah, it's, you've heard my story, arguing with Hoopla, okay, yeah.
Oh, well, like, my favorite thing is, yeah?
Yeah, yes, well, I, yeah.
I, I, I'm astonished at some of the books they recommend for me.
Well, I was, I know if you're in, I, I have, like, I checked out all my hoopla stuff for this month, but I can't check anything else, so. Um, but it's just a brand new thing. Like, hoopla is the, is it gonna now?
Uh, no, he's got a call, he had a call from a staff member, so. Uh, yeah, hoopla is, hoopla's branded to hoopla instead of Decatur Public Library. Well, they finally got our logo, logo on it.
Yeah, your logo's on it.
After me, uh, uh, arguing with them for about a year, because I'm like, oh, I, I, I get frustrated when people come up to me and say, uh, thanks for, thanks for bringing us hoopla, you know, and I, it should just all be, hey, thanks for bringing us those electronic books, because nobody's thanking me for Baker &amp; Taylor. Baker &amp; Taylor's are, you know, pleasant, we love books, but nobody comes up to me and thanks me for Baker &amp; Taylor, they just say, hey, you got a great selection of books. Uh, so it's just, I, I think they, I, I don't think patrons need to know who the company has that supplies it, they just need to associate everything with Decatur Public Library, but that's my, that's the argument I have with them every time. So I love the app, I really do.
Yeah, that's great. All right, so we'll move on to, um, old business, because it sounded like Robert will be able to join. Um, so board openings, and so I have talked to the mayor. Um, we did, Brooke and I did meet with, um, a prospective board member, and they have turned in their application to the mayor, so I don't know if the status is up yet, so we will see. And then she said that she has another person, um, in mind, but I don't know who that person is or if they've submitted an application to her. So that would be two. I know this is technically Michael and Greg's last meeting, um, if you guys don't mind staying until we can, it sounds like we do have a lead on, on a couple people, um, so hopefully we'll, we'll be able to get them on.
And Michael, you're just as important as Greg. I need you to know that, I need you to know that, that's.
Whatever. Hey, in my background, follow up.
Did you say the mayor also had another prospective? Yes. Okay, yeah.
It's good news.
Yeah, I know. So then that would, um, that would replace you guys, and then, um, you know, when Amy and, and then we would have, still have two openings, so, like, once Amy, um, gets to go to her new place, so, all right. So move on to electronic sign, so this should, it should have been an action, but, um, it's okay.
So, where did we leave it exactly? We're all gonna, we're all gonna try to take some time to look at how it looked.
Yes, so we were all gonna go out, because the last time we talked, there are some trees blocking it, so, um, we, that's where we left it. So did everybody get a chance to kind of drive it out? Because I did look from the far left side of, of Franklin, and it looks fine from there. I don't know about the middle lane, um, and when you're sitting at the stoplight, you can, um, sorry, going down Main Street towards the library, yeah, Main, um, it looks fine too.
You can't see it perfectly from everywhere.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, but, but, you know, it, there is a, a, a certain, a certain area where it would be ideal to be able to see it, that you can't.
Yes.
In the right lane.
Right, in the correct, in the right lane, closest lane.
In my, my view, when I saw it, was the tree needs to come down, uh, because, because it just, you know, there are places you can see it, there's places you cannot see it. Uh, it would be better if it's just a clearer view, you know, as you come up Franklin.
Yeah.
And I would be fine with that if you guys are.
Yeah.
I mean, either way, it's still, it's still blocking our current sign, I think, so.
True.
And, I mean, but it's also up to the city, because that tree belongs to the city, so.
Should we pursue that? I mean, I.
Because where else would you put this sign? There's really no.
There's not a good place.
The only solution would be to remove that tree.
And it seems like it's only one tree. I think it's like, I think the middle tree, I don't know. I took a picture of it, but I don't have it.
So is it that, is it that we propose something to the city to remove the tree?
Yeah, I'll, I'll proceed however you guys direct, I, I.
Well, we can't really do anything today, but that would be our intention, or it sounds like.
I mean, unless.
Could we just get their feelings on whether they would be willing to take it?
Yes, and, and are they willing to let us put the sign up in the first place? Like, so those two things go hand in hand.
Hey, Rick, why don't you, why don't you talk to Kinsel?
Okay.
If he's done the building committee, why don't you talk to Kinsel? Talk to him about putting the sign up, uh, talk to him about cutting the tree down, um, and then, uh, then he can brief Ryan, make your approval, and then, uh, that we have what we need to do for.
Does anybody have any objections to that? Because I'm, I'm, that's the world of the board, and I'm happy to, to, to put forward and.
Let's, uh, let's also plant the tree somewhere else.
That's a good idea.
In the parking lot.
Yeah, there you go. That's, that's a good idea. Maybe, uh, maybe the big library pays for a tree to be planted somewhere in the green space.
Yes, let's do that.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, so let's, uh, I will, I will contact John tomorrow, and we'll go from there.
Okay. All right, so that is, so we can't do anything, this discussion. Any other old business? All right, so new business, um, we did not have, um, a meeting, so Amy, do you want to do it, or do you wanna?
Yeah, no, I can, so, everything's very routine, sorry about not having a meeting. And there were a couple of big expenditures on the check-in board, and I just thought, uh, you know, maybe you could offer some brief comments, Rick. The Gail Group, um, for fifty-five hundred dollars, a payment to Overdrive, and then Jessica Hill. Maybe you could just briefly talk about.
I can't hear her.
About those three.
Yeah, Gail, Gail Group is, uh, Gail Group is for their, uh, online classes that, uh, that they provide to, to us for our, for our patrons. So there's, it's gotta be over a hundred classes, anything from sort of, sort of practical stuff, there's a, there's basic computer skills, there are, uh, there's some, uh, guitar lessons, some language stuff, there's a, a wide variety of, of different classes that you can take. Um, and they are real-time classes, if I remember correctly.
Rick, wait, what kind of usage are we getting?
Uh, up and down, up and down, and, and we're looking at, you know, as far as this year goes, we're looking at last chance for a lot of things. Uh, you know, what, what happens usually is as we, as we sort of sunset one program and buy, and, and subscribe to new programs, those new programs get a lot of interest for a year or two, and then it goes down. And, and honestly, Gail is kind of on its way down. Uh, but it's on, that said, there are also job skill things. Uh, so we wanna, we wanna stick with it for, uh, you know, as long as we can, the usage is, is, is nothing to write home about right now.
Is that something that, like, Project RE did use? Like, are they, do they use it? I don't know.
They don't, because there's not anything that's really as basic as what they're, as what they're doing.
Yeah.
Uh, but, yeah, anybody can use it, that's a, that's a DPO card. The Overdrive is a, is a, uh, so Overdrive is, is library on the go, the library, the ebooks, uh, so that's our, so we make a deposit and then we draw down on it, we choose, choose the books to purchase for our collection, and we draw down on it. And then you asked about Jessica Hill, was that the last, last one, Amy?
Yeah, that just, you know, how is she, talked about it last, about her last month, and how she provided services and.
Yeah, there's, there's been a big increase, uh, in the last month in, in, uh, her contacts and her referrals. Yeah, we went from just a couple a month to this last month, there was probably almost every day she, she met with at least one person and made referrals for them. So, uh, she's, she's well-used now. Yeah.
With that, I would recommend that you will approve the May check-in service.
Okay, can I have a second? Also, I can, Sophia? All right, so we'll go down the list, so, uh, Kate, yes. Michael?
Yes.
Carl? Amy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophie, oh, Sophia?
Yes.
I was like, you seconded it. And Samantha, yes. All right, so the check-in service is passed, and we want to, sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Then there, there are two information items, both of which look, uh, quite straightforward. The budget report, at the, at the end of May, they were forty-two percent of the year as half. Um, it looks like revenue, other than property taxes, going to be a little bit additional, and maybe Rick can talk about that in the direction part. Payrolls, investors, you know, track, books are slightly ahead at that point, which is great. Um, I had a question on software, I've always had this before, help me, remind me, it's, it's lumpy, right? And you made some investments already this year, but.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's subscriptions that come, you know, come up at certain months, and that's, so, yeah, some months are gonna be, are gonna. some months are going to be, are going to be much bigger than others. And then some things only come every three years or every two years, and.
Right. Then on your budget projection, you're showing that on revenue, we're going to be favorable, and expense, we're going to be favorable, that's what we're all looking at. And I would just make my usual note that it's very, very important, given the age and the, and the size of the building, will there be adequate reserves for building-related? I know that's a city issue, but will there be adequate building reserves for building-related issues? So Rick, could you say something about why social activities?
Yeah, we, I mean, we are, we've already collected more than we budgeted for, for the year. And, and usually, at this point in, in the year, we're just under half. Usually by, by the end of May, we've, we've collected just under half of what we will, of what our total collection will be. So I'm basi, it's, it's a lumpy revenue source as well, but it's predictably so. So, but, it, it looks like that's going to just be knocked out of the park. But the caveat I would add is that the state's fiscal year starts July one, so. But from what I'm hearing from, from the State House, that that, it's not going to be, it's not austerity in Springfield. You know, I, I think, I think we'll continue to collect this at a pretty good rate. I don't know if Greg is hearing anything different than that, but it looks very favorable at this point.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing.
Well, and, and there was, the big news this afternoon, that former state senator Andy Menard has moved to deputy governor from what's it?
Moved up, moved up to what?
Deputy governor for the budget.
Deputy governor for the budget.
Okay. Yeah, so, and the, some of these, you know, professional services could, you know, you never know, it could turn around, but, you know, we haven't had to consult a whole lot with, with Chris this year, and that has stayed really, really low. Small capital, as far as I know, we should be okay on that, but that could go up. I, we're, the good news is we've got control over that stuff. You know, we've got some, some degree of control over it, so if things were to, to turn sour, we, you know, we'd still be all right. But it's, it, it looks like it's going to end up to be a much better budget year than we had feared. And, and some of that is because, you know, my understanding is, you know, at least on the state level, sales tax collections were much stronger than expected. So we expect to get, you know, after we've been getting a dollar and a quarter per capita for all these years, and after twenty years, we got about ninety cents, we expect to get about a buck and a half this year, so. That's good news too, and it's based on the twenty-ten census still, for one more year, because the, the city level numbers, as far as I know, have not been released yet from the census. Have you seen that, Greg? I haven't seen any of it yet. So, you know, that, that should come in pretty strong to the, for Gavin Graham.
Great.
If I can, just some comments related to some of what Amy was asking about budget, so, or what she was talking about. The, you know, there's been a theme that Amy's had about capital requirements of library. And at the end of May, the, the library pays a rent to the city for use of the facility. And as of the end of May, the city has three hundred thousand dollars in a fund for maintenance of the library. The city has also been pursuing the grant, the state grant of three hundred thousand dollars, that would fund a good portion of the HVAC or the air handling improvements that we did over the last year. There's no expectation we're not going to receive that, because it was approved by, you know, the state a year ago, but it just hasn't been distributed to a shot. So, so all in all, we've got six hundred thousand dollars in a cash reserve to take care of library facility needs, prepare maintenance, and so on. Mike Christian recently has done a bunch of things related to the roof. We're going to have to replace the roof at some point. There's some issues, and that could probably happen over the next one to two years. But, but that's the biggest capital need the library has. And the city's prepared for it, the city has the reserves to do that. I have no idea yet what, what a replacement roof cost would be, but, but I'm confident that there's enough in the cash reserves to be able to take care of that.
Great, and how about the, the ongoing heat fact, probably due to the last couple of weeks, so, Greg?
I mean, from, from my knowledge, it's been resolved. I'm not in the buildings right now, obviously, but Rick told me this morning that the temperature's cooling down. So, you know, the, the chiller is still in good order, there were some maintenance issues that caused the problem, I'm, hold it's corrected, the chiller has many more years of life on it, so I'm told. And, and we'll see over the next short period of time what happens, but, but I think initially what Trey had said it was a big problem, turned out to be not so much a problem, but it's now being corrected.
I, I would just like to just say, you know, it was, obviously, it went on a while, it was uncomfortable, but wasn't it for lack of, lack of effort or responsiveness on the city's part? Hands off to Greg and, and Mike Christian and his team. Because Mike, you know, Mike played some 3D chess with, with those guys, and because they were, Greg is being much more diplomatic than, than I'm about to be. They were trying to do work that didn't need to be done. And, and, and Mike, Mike convinced them to do the right thing, let's just put it that way. And it saved a lot of time, and I would imagine a lot of money, Greg, so.
And I take it, I take it in the room, the, the fiber you are sitting, it's cool?
We're comfortable, yeah.
It's comfortable, I'm usually super hot, so.
And I'm freezing, so, like, I mean, that's my normal.
I see, I see Sam has long sleeves on.
I know, I got my jacket on, because I knew I was going to be cold. But I was hoping I would be cold, I should say, yeah. So that was going to be my last question, does anybody have any other new business or anything else?
I, I would just like to make the comments, necessarily new business perhaps, but today, you know, this is the last board meeting for me, and, you know, for Michael. Six years ago, we were appointed to the board by a former mayor, Michael McElroy. And at, at a time, there were a lot of issues going on with the library, you know, prior management issues and so on. And it's, it's my belief, the, the library is in a lot better position today than it was six, six years ago when Mike and I were appointed to the board. Not necessarily applauding Mike and I, but, but we were part of everything that Rick has done, everything that all of you have done as board members, and every, and everyone else who was a board member during that, that time, during the last six years. I believe all have, have played a role in, in moving the library from where it was six years ago to where it is today. And today is a much better place than it was six years ago. So it's an honor to serve, it's fun, I've enjoyed it, and.
But he can't get off.
Everybody's doing great job.
I was going to say, are you going to give that speech next month? Because.
He's going to keep giving until we let him go.
I hope you've been paying attention, Ben. You know that, right?
Um, I, 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 I have said to have a beat to go, that I would, I would serve until they try to replace.
We'll draft you.
Exactly. Just in case this is your last meeting, that was a very nice speech.
Where's your sidebar? Right.
Well, my speech, I, when Tim asked me to do it, I mean, I just, I said yes, and I liked his plan for the library, voting that what was coming. And then my, the only other thing is that it's, mine was just the capital campaign, because that was the wish. Done, so. I've enjoyed it. And I've got Sophia and Susan on this board.
Look at that.
Thanks to them for coming onto the board.
Hi, Robert.
Hi, Robert.
He's scared you can't hear you.
I know.
Hi, Robert.
Just as, just as we're getting ready to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I gotta go, I did.
Bye, bye. See you, Michael.
Okay, see you, guys.
So, do we want to go back, or?
That's your call.
Robert, do you have any comments? Because we're getting ready to adjourn.
Oh, oh, happy adjournment.
Well, thank you. Alright, so we do have to do the roll call.
I make, oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
I make a motion, I'll second.
Yeah. Alright, so we're going to do Kate, yes, Carl?
From you, Carl.
I know. Alright, so Amy?
Yes.
Carl, you're not on here now?
Yes.
Alright, Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Let me adjourn.